Good afternoon. How's everybody doing this? Good Tuesday. Let the record show that we call this regular board meeting to order at 3 o'clock on May 9, 2023. We'll start the top of the agenda with an invocation. And I believe Commissioner O'Keefe will introduce our invited guests for the invocation.
Absolutely. I have the pleasure of introducing Pastor Lenoris McFadden of the Shady Grove Primitive Baptist Church in the Chairs Community, where he has been senior pastor since 2016. Pastor McFadden also serves as the president of the Victory House Community Resource Center, which provides our community with assistance, resources, and inspiration through hunger relief, youth empowerment, educational support, and senior services outreach. Thank you, Pastor.
Good. Good afternoon, County Commission. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe, for this great opportunity and to all of our commissioners. Blessings to you and thank you for allowing us to be here today. Can we join in just a moment of prayer? Father God, we come to you today. We give you glory, honor, and praise. We thank you for this day that you have made. Thank you for your grace, which is sufficient for us, and your mercy, which was brand-new this morning. Before we ask for anything, we just pause and thank you for everything. Thank you for being faithful to us. Thank you for providing for us. Thank you for leading us and guiding us. Thank you for giving us such a great commission, this Board of County Commissioners, that you have selected for such a time as this. We are gracious to you, God. We pray now that you will continue to crown their heads with wisdom and knowledge, that they will understand that they are serving you as they are serving others, that they will continue to position themselves in your presence to work out your kingdom agenda here in the earth. And God, since it's the month of May, let us pray accordingly. May you continue to bless us. May you continue to keep us. May you continue to let your grace shine upon us. May you continue to remind us that you have chosen us for such a time as this. May you continue to keep your people and your will at our forefront. May you continue to give us peace as we're making decisions, as we're the key decision-makers for this great county. May you continue to allow the blood of Jesus to cover our county, that there be no hurt, harm, or danger come now our dwellings. With so much going on in our land and country, God, we look to you. We ask you to continue to secure the borders here in Leon County. Thank you for assigning us to such a place like this for such a season as this. And we give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. I pray, God, in this Mental Health Awareness Month, that you would continue to regulate our minds. Your word declares that if we would keep our minds stayed on you, that you would keep us in perfect peace. And so I pray even for these commissioners, as they are making tough decisions and hard decisions in the face of adversity and sometimes opposition. We don't take for granted that they are always in a state of peace. And so, God, we pray now that your mind, that your spirit would take over their mind and their spirit, that they would find themselves in a place of peace. We give you glory. We give you honor. We give you praise. We call forth every resource, everything that's needed for Leon County. Release now anything that's being withheld, any agendas that are not like you, God. We put them in your care, and we ask that you would stand up and continue to have your way. We give you the glory. We give you the honor. We give you the praise. And we call it all done in Jesus' mighty name. Amen in the heavens, amen in the earth. Well, everyone, please stand, please, for the pledge. Commissioner O'Keefe, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Start off with a couple of proclamations that I'll be presenting, followed by Commissioner Cummings. The first proclamation will be given to for National Public Works Week. Will the representative who's going to receive the proclamation, please come up? Thank you. The proclamation reads, whereas in 1960, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed the National Public Works Week was served as an annual reminder of the value public works professionals contribute to our, to all of our lives. And whereas public works services provide in our county, in our community, an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, parks, and stormwater maintenance. And whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on the facilities and services as illustrated by the Florida chapter of APWA's tagline, "First to respond, last to leave." And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works employees. And whereas Leon County's Department of Public Works was awarded full accreditation by the American Public Works Association on April 19, 2021, further demonstrating dedication from staff towards continuous improvement and excellence. And whereas this year's theme, Connecting the World Through Public Works, illustrates how public works connects us all through infrastructure and service, enhancing the quality of life for the communities these professionals serve. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners in Leon County that the week of May 21 through May 27, 2023 be known as National Public Works Week in Leon County, Florida. The Board further encourages all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public work services and to recognize the contribution which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. This is signed by myself, as well as the rest of the commission, and attested to by the county administrator. Congratulations.
We would like to thank you for the recognition and also for all your support and continued leadership. Thank you again.
All right, National Bike Month. I'm not sure I should be reading this one because I can't tell you the last time I rode a bike. Who's here to receive that one? Hey, come on up. All right, here we go. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been played as an important role in the lives of countless Americans. And whereas today, millions nationwide engage in bicycling as an environmental, sound form of transportation and an excellent form of fitness and a quality family recreation. And whereas the education of residents on the proper and safe operation of bicycles and motor vehicles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And whereas local cycling organizations and independent cyclists throughout our community are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in a effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities. And whereas Leon County's vast network of on-road and off-road trails support the livelihood of our citizens. And whereas Visit Tallahassee is promoting the use of the bicycle as both a means of transportation and recreation to attract more visitors to enjoy our local parks and trail systems, as well as restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions. Now therefore be it resolved or proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that the month of May 2023 be known as National Bike Month in Leon County, Florida. The Board further urges all citizens to participate by taking a bike ride to explore our beautiful community. This is signed by myself, attested to by the county administrator, and signed by the rest of the commission. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Just have a few words. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Thank you to all of our county commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Bree Van Ossen, the head coach of the Tallahassee Thunder, a youth mountain biking team in Tallahassee for middle and high school students. Let's see, I'm honored to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of the youth in our community, and they're here with me. I've had the opportunity to work with a number of our young mountain bikers, and I tell you that the future is very strong in this county. Tallahassee Thunder is a small but mighty team. This season, we had 29 kids and 19 coaches. We participated in 52 individual events, practices, races, other things in the preseason, comprising over 120 hours of programming. This is all volunteer organization, sponsored by the Tallahassee Mountain Bike Association, TIMBA. We participate in the Florida League of the National Interscholastic Cycling Association, also known as NICA. I started the Tallahassee Thunder because I believe that everyone deserves an opportunity to participate in sports regardless of their background or financial situation. I'm committed to building a team that's representative of our local community. And to date, we have helped over 18 riders and their families overcome some sort of cost obstacle so that they could participate on our team. Mountain biking is not an expensive sport, to get started. I'm grateful for the support of the county commissioners, Parks and Recreation Department, TIMBA, and also grateful for the individual contributions and support of our community members, especially the awesome cycling community that we have here in Tallahassee. They've been great to us. So I just wanted to take a minute to recognize Visit Tallahassee for their support. Visit Tallahassee was once again one of the league's primary sponsors. And I always get a kick out of going to races. We travel to races around the state. And at the podium, when all the kids are being, given their awards, their medals, Visit Tallahassee is right up there front and center. And it's a point of pride for me, and knowing that our community is backing this league. It's really awesome. I also wanted to thank our Parks and Rec Department and Amanda, and Chris and his crew out at JR Alfred. We had a race out there. It was fantastic. Every person that I talked to afterwards said it was one of the best events that they've attended. They loved the trails. They loved the facilities. And they were really impressed with how Leon County really just kind of like wrapped everybody up in a big embrace of support. Chris's crew was out there mowing grass as folks were arriving just to make sure everything was absolutely jammed up and perfect. So just wanted to point that out, and thank you for that. You know, as a team and as a sport, we are very dependent on our local cycling infrastructure. When talking with other teams' coaches, I'm always amazed at how few trails they have in other cities. These are cities like Fort Myers, Sunrise, Florida, Gainesville, if you can imagine. Very few trails, a small amount of infrastructure. And they are super blown away when they come to Tallahassee. And they tell me what they've ridden. I'm like, oh, you only did about half of it. And they're like, wow, we need to come back. So, you know, I really do think that there's a lot here. And we feel so lucky to be able to, as a team, rotate between four or five really high-quality parks with well-maintained single tracks. So y'all are doing a great job. Thank you very much. Excited to see what the future holds for Leon County and the Tallahassee Thunder. And I know that together we can accomplish great things. With that, I just want to invite Chloe Wilcox to come say a few words. Chloe is an eighth grader at the School of Arts and Sciences on Thomasville Road. She plans to attend Leon in the fall. Chloe has been with the team since the very beginning. She's one of our core team members. She's also a team ambassador who engages with riders and coaches with other teams around the state in support of the league's Girls Riding Together program. Chloe?
Hold this down. Thank you so much, Bree. And I just want to start by saying I'm so grateful for living in a community where cycling can have become such a positive aspect of my entire life through my childhood and into my teenage years. TIMBA is such a great part of Tallahassee and really helps to build kids' experience with things such as trail maintenance workdays and helps keep the trails 100% working right for the team. Growing up with the beginner rides was extremely helpful for me when I was first getting into cycling, and TIMBA was such a huge part of that, hosting them and being really helpful. And now I ride with the women's intermediate group a lot, and that's one of my favorite places to ride because it's such a supportive community. The NICA team is a huge part of my cycling life right now. And having so many supportive coaches and teammates that have turned into some of my best friends over the years is such a great part of my life. I ride with them now outside of the team. We ride almost every weekend, and it's a lot of fun. Cycling is also a huge aspect of my family that I love so much. I've been riding with my dad since I was really little, and now I get to ride with my younger brother a lot, and I love it so much. I basically grew up on bikes in the Tallahassee cycling community, and it's such a great place for young children, especially young girls and boys, to like grow up and be able to be enriched in that type of activity when they're young. It's so great to have a month that is dedicated to celebrating cycling in Tallahassee because it's such a huge aspect of our community. And there's a lot of people that are really interested in it or interested in becoming involved in it, especially young girls, because there's not a huge collection of women that take part in cycling in Tallahassee or anywhere, but it's growing a lot every day. And I'm really happy that there's a lot of people that are getting to be involved in something that I love so much and so many people in Tallahassee take such pride in. Thank you.
Hello.
Sorry, sorry. Did you want to say something, Finley? Okay. Sorry about that. A little miss you.
As I take my seat, Vice Chair Cummings will come up and present a couple of proclamations. Thank you. First proclamation Commissioner Cummings will present is to our very own Wanda Hunter for being named one of the Tallahassee Democrats' 25 women to know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hunter, do you have any family members who'd like to join you?
Just the county administrator and my family of PON County employees. My children had to work. They need to work. And my husband's on pickup duty for my driveway.
Okay. So if the county administrator would join us, and any other county employees? Thank you so much. And it's, of course, my honor and pleasure to present this proclamation to Mrs. Hunter. And it reads, whereas Wanda Hunter serves as the Assistant County Administrator for Citizen Services overseeing a number of county offices, including library services, public safety, intervention and detention alternatives, and human services, and community partnerships. And whereas Wanda's 34 years of service with Leon County brings a depth of understanding and level of experience that strengthens the overall management structure of the county. And whereas Wanda Hunter demonstrates leadership in advancing the quality of life of citizens through her profession and beyond. And whereas Wanda has committed her professional career to public service, her passion and dedication to making a lasting community impact extends well beyond her career. And whereas in her previous role as Director of the County's Office of Intervention and Detention Alternatives, Wanda was a highly effective communicator, capable of working successfully with a diverse user community, including the judiciary, state attorney, public defender, and law enforcement. And whereas Wanda pioneered a number of innovative programs aimed to restoring and enhancing the quality of life of the clients it serves and assisting them in becoming productive and responsible citizens for a safer community. And whereas Wanda also continues to be an advocate for women pursuing non-traditional career paths and has worked with local partners in identifying innovative approaches to recruit, support, and encourage women to explore skilled careers. And whereas Wanda is a woman committed to making a difference through positive change at the governmental level, as demonstrated by her leadership and contribution to furthering issues of public importance in our community. And whereas, as reflected throughout this proclamation, Wanda, as the paragon of public service, a role model for women, an advocate for community members most in need, is truly among the women you need to know in this community. And we are honored that she was recognized by the Tallahassee Democrats, 25 women you need to know for 2023. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, do hereby congratulate Ms. Wanda Hunter on her career of service and on this recognition. This is signed by our Chair, Nick Maddox. It's served by all the county commissioners and attested to by our county administrator, Mr. Vincent Long. Congratulations. Very well deserved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, county administrator. I won't speak long, Vincent, we've got work to do, so I won't take up a lot of time. But I want you to know I'm very honored and appreciative of this recognition. I stand along with and on the shoulders of many, many wonderful women in this community, many of whom work for this organization. So it should please you to know that you won't be surprised if you see another Leon County employee accepting this award in years in the future. So again, thank you.
If I could just add a disclaimer, you heard, first of all, if you know Wanda, you know that was the most painful about two minutes of her life, or whatever that was. But the most important words in that resolution were 34 years. And what Commissioner Cummings didn't read was, and counting. So we're going to continue that going for as long as we can, folks, but we're really proud of Wanda, needless to say, and congratulations. Thanks.
Before we move on, our Immediate Pass has a few words, and I'd like to offer some myself. Commissioner Proctor?
Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen here today. I really would have liked to have written that resolution, but I think mine would have been much more mushier. And so I'm glad that somebody maintained cognitive order. But Wanda represents, really, we have the best administrator in the world. And it stands to reason that his associates, assistants, and those in the top rungs of leadership in Leon County. You know, they say that somebody don't fall far from the tree. So it's not surprising. It's in keeping with the spirit of excellence, which has been our county's staff's leadership across Florida, recognized across the world. Indeed, Wanda is just a symbol of that excellence. Congratulations, Wanda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Immediate Pass. I wanted to just say to Wanda, it's nice to see you sitting in that number two chair for the commission today. It's very fitting, given the honor that you were given. But I think what most people don't know is Wanda Hunter exemplifies what Leon County is all about and has been that for years. And being that team player who is quiet, doesn't really care much about getting the credit, but always gets the job done. And that's what we live by here, and you deserve this honor because that's who you've been. Ever since I've been here, when I was working with you through probation, you've been quiet, but you've been steady, you've been effective, you've been a leader throughout this organization. And today culminates to show just how much you mean, not just to Leon County, but to this community. And so I want to thank you so much for the job you've done here, but also outside of here, and the example that you've set for little girls who look just like you and want to be like you today. Thank you. All right. All right, so next we'll go to a proclamation from our Vice Chair again, celebrating or recognizing 100, the 100th anniversary of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce. Those representatives, please come up. Hey, before you start, Mr. Administrator did clarify something. I just want to make the disclaimer, I was not a client when I was working with her. It's just subtle disclaimer there.
That would've been fine. We believe in rehabilitation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Ms. Vice Chair?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation to the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce and congratulate them on 100 years of great service to this community, the director, Ms. Sue Dick, board members, and President.
I'm going to ask the rest of our board. We have other board members here.
Okay. Will the board members please come forward? Yeah, have some on both sides. Thank you so much. And this is the proclamation, and it reads, whereas the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce leaves and promotes the success of businesses to achieve a higher quality of life for the citizens of Tallahassee. And whereas the Tallahassee Chamber strives to create a diverse and strong regional economy where businesses succeed and where the entire community prospers. And whereas for more than 100 years, the Tallahassee Chamber has contributed to the economic growth and vitality of Tallahassee, advocated for businesses, and amplified the voice of the business community. And whereas the Tallahassee Chamber is governed by a volunteer board of directors who are committed to the growth of Florida's capital city and whose members are representative of small businesses, industry, nonprofits, and higher education. And whereas every day, the Tallahassee Chamber advances job growth as the proven remedy for accelerating community solutions. And whereas the Tallahassee Chamber continues to focus on the issues that ensure a pro-job climate, regional industry advancement, and advocates for growth and development of a vibrant Tallahassee community. And whereas the Tallahassee Chamber provides community engagement and advancement with several affiliated programs, including Access Tallahassee, Leadership Tallahassee, World Class Schools, and Youth Leadership Tallahassee. And whereas the Tallahassee Chamber proudly presents, represents more than 1,200 local businesses and over 55,000 business leaders and employees. And now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, do hereby proclaim the year of 2023 as the 100th anniversary of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, dated this ninth day of May, 2023, signed by our Chairman, Nick Maddox, attested to by all the commissioners, signed by all the commissioners, and attested to by our great county administrator, Vincent Long. Congratulations, Ms. Dick, and all of the members of the chamber.
I will. First of all, I want to say something briefly, and I'll follow the lead of our great county administrator, letting our board members speak for us because that's who's leading the way. But it's been my honor to serve as the president and CEO for close to 23 years of this Chamber of Commerce. But I get to do the great work for our community because of our Board of Directors. And I want to thank them, but also thank the partnership with our county. I've stood before this dais for many, many years, working to enhance and improve our community and to really make it the great place that we all know and love. I would, however, like I said earlier, could not do this without a Board of Directors and for some of our board members that are joining us today. And I'd like at this time to have Terry Art, our chairman, come forward and just make a couple comments as well. Thank you again.
Thank you, Sue, and to-
Thank you, Sue, and to Vice Chair Cummings, Chair Maddox, the Commission, and County Administrator Vince Long. Thank you for your collaboration and partnership over many years. As we stand here today to celebrate our 100th year anniversary, this is a chamber and an organization that is driven by the time and energy of our volunteers. Having some of our board members here today just really does show the commitment as we are one of the longest-running and most influential business organizations. You start to think about the business leaders that are all pouring their passion into, how can we create even more of a community culture that is focused on talent retention and talent recruitment that will continue to elevate our community? And all of this is possible with the public-private partnership. So many thanks to you for recognizing us here today. And thank you to our volunteer leadership. I'm also joined by two Past Chairs, Mark Mushkin, who's in the audience, and Kathy Bell. And what a tremendous honor. This is a great year, and we're really just getting started. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Want to recognize our County Administrator for a few comments?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just couldn't let the moment pass without saying, Commissioners, that, I mean, you all see the Chamber's involvement on a lot of the big things we do that are obviously very visible in the community, but really just wanted to underscore, you've heard the words "collaboration" and "cooperation," but Sue and Terry, it's the things that we do every day with this group, really the blocking and tackling out there in the community. It really takes place all the time on the little things and the big things. And Sue said she's been there 23 years. I was going to say, it feels like Sue and I have been working together this full 100 years of this anniversary. But again, just wanted to say a big thanks to them and for being such great partners to the county. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I now want to ask Mr. Kevin Peters to come up and give us an overview on the upcoming 2023 hurricane season. Kevin?
Hey, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Administrator. It's just about that time of year again, hurricane season. So before we get into this season's outlook, I just wanted to take a step last year and review Hurricane Season 2022. Last May, the National Weather Service issued their seasonal outlook, and they were calling for an above-average season last year with up to 21 named storms. When it ended last November, Hurricane Season 2022 was right about average with 14 named storms, eight hurricanes. Two of those were major hurricanes. State of Florida knows one of those major hurricanes all too well. That was Hurricane Ian. Made landfall on September 28th in southwest Florida as a Category 4 hurricane, the most costly hurricane in Florida history and the third most costly in U.S. history. But in case you missed it, Florida was hit by a second hurricane last year. Hurricane Nicole made landfall November 10th as a very weak Category 1 hurricane. Landfall was near Vero Beach. It moved northwest across the state and actually passed just across the eastern edges of Leon County late on the evening of November 10th with maximum sustained gusts of 36 miles per hour. So while last year was near normal, there was still a lot of activity. And I think that's kind of the key that I hope we all walk away with is, even though it may not be an active season, it's not a zero-activity season. So looking at 2023, we're still a little bit away from the official forecast from the National Weather Service. But Colorado State University has issued their initial forecast. They are the pioneers in the extended-range hurricane forecasting. It started at Colorado State under Dr. William Bill Gray. And they're calling for 13 named storms, six hurricanes, and two of those to become major hurricanes. There are various other entities. The Weather Channel, for example, is calling for 15 named storms, seven hurricanes, and three major hurricanes. So in the absence of the official forecast from NOAA at this time, I think it'd be safe for us to bank right now on the 30-year average, which is 14 named storms, seven hurricanes, and of those seven, three could become major. The main reason why we're looking at the possibility for a less-active season this year compared to some of the previous seasons is the onset of the El Nino conditions. Primarily, it's based on water temperatures in the Pacific Ocean. But what it does for us to help lessen hurricane activity is it increases the jet stream from the Pacific Ocean moving west to east across the Atlantic. It might be a little hard to visualize without a picture. But anyways, the wind will be blowing against any systems that develop in the Atlantic. Now, what that will do, it will interrupt the development. It won't prevent it. We will still have tropical waves and things of that nature. But that's what really causes us to see less activity in El Nino years. Now, the little caveat to that, the good news is less possible activity, but similar seasons that were El Nino years were 1992, where you had Hurricane Andrew. In that year, there were only seven storms. And another similar year, similar conditions at this point is 2004, which we saw Charlie, Francis, Ivan, and Gene all hit the state of Florida. So again, the key is we have to be prepared, regardless of what the numbers are. So if we do get a storm, one thing I wanted to encourage everybody to not do, I suppose is the way to say it, is to not focus on the hurricane cone. Focusing on that cone is kind of like focusing on the popsicle stick inside a popsicle. It only tells you what's right down the middle. It doesn't tell you anything about what the hazards are and how far they extend from the middle. If you visit the National Hurricane Center's website at www.hurricanes.gov, there's a whole suite of meteorological products that can convey the risk beyond just the extent of the cone. All that's going to tell us is just where the middle of the storm is. Again, when we have hurricanes and tropical storms, they're much larger than the cone. So I just want everybody in the room and everybody watching at home to understand that you need to look at the bigger picture and not just focus on the cone if you're making safety decisions. And as we go through the remainder of May and into hurricane season, staying informed is the best thing citizens can do. Visiting LeonReady.com is going to be the one-stop shop for all of the preparedness information we have here with Leon County Government and Leon County Emergency Management. Again, that's LeonReady.com. You can download a copy of the Disaster Survival Guide, get your Build Your Bucket Essential Supplies List. You can request a neighborhood readiness training and follow emergency events on our emergency information portal. Additionally, I encourage citizens to download the Leon County Citizens Connect app. You can get emergency notifications all year long, not just during hurricane season, whether it's weather alerts or emergency actions, if shelters are open or sandbags are available. You can get those alerts through that system all year long. And really, just to sum it up, this hurricane season may be near average, but we still need to expect around seven hurricanes. Don't focus on the hurricane cone itself. That's just the middle of the storm. Look at what the hazards outside the cone are. And stay informed, be prepared. Visit LeonReady.com to get your latest preparedness information. And that concludes the outlook.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate you. All right. We'll move now to the citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Administrator, do we have any citizens to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do. First Speaker, Will Fullerson.
Name and address for the record, please. When you get to the podium, name and address for the records. You have three minutes.
Will Fullerson. I've never been to one of these meetings before, but I was told to come here by the property appraiser to sort of plead a case. So I'll just stick to the notes and be brief. In November of 2021, my wife and I bought a house here in Tallahassee, and we moved from Atlanta with our son, who was less than a year old. I had to be out of state for the closing due to my job. So it was just my wife and son who were physically at the closing of the house in Tallahassee. In December or January following that, we checked the property appraiser website. At that time, it showed that our homestead exemption had been filed. My wife, my realtor, and I all thought that it had been taken care of because of this, and we later learned that the website was still showing the status of the previous owners. After talking with the property appraiser this year in February, I learned that the filing had not taken place. And I knew something was off because the mortgage payment, like, jumped crazy amounts. And the property appraiser told me they had mailed a courtesy reminder, I think in May, but it was never delivered because my house has two different addresses. We have like a mailbox on a different side, a different street than where the front door faces. So we essentially don't get mail to the address they had for us. I've since given them my mailing address and fixed that and, you know, done the homestead. But the damage has already kind of been done because it's a year late. So essentially, like, through the chaos of me not being there at the closing and the baby and everything, we just thought it had been taken care of, and it wasn't. And so I'm here kind of on behalf of my wife and I, or me, to ask if y'all would consider assessing the property as if the homestead had been filed on time, kind of like retroactively.
Thank you, sir. This is the portion where we don't, Commissioners don't comment, but I'll tell you what, once you do this for me, if you give Ms. Hunter your name, we'll be happy to help and get staffed to get right on that. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So if you give her your card that has your name on it and maybe a way to reach her?
The card I filled out today.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Nia Ogletree.
How you doing, ma'am? Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Nia Ogletree. I live at 8146 Chris Lane. So I'm currently a student at Florida State, and I'm also a campus organizer with an organization called GenCleo at FSU. GenCleo is a climate advocacy and education organization. We're dedicated to achieving climate justice in communities like Leon County. And I'm here today to speak in favor of passing a or proposing a climate emergency resolution here for Leon County. Our proposed resolution would acknowledge that climate change is, in fact, an emergency that we should treat as such. We also have included the current work of the Leon County Commission on climate change and environmental issues in Leon County, as well as the work that the Leon County Office of Sustainability is currently doing. And so essentially, we want to see Leon County do much more and continue the work they're doing, such as forming a youth climate advisory council that would report monthly or bimonthly to the Commission, continuing to improve water quality, as well as continuing to work towards food justice, issues like these that are important and connected to climate change. And I'm passionate, really passionate, about these issues because I care a lot about the environment. I love our natural resources here. I like hiking the Lafayette Heritage Trail, things like that. Tallahassee is such a beautiful place, and I think we really need to preserve our natural resources and ensure that as we're working towards sustainability in Leon County, we're continuing to consider all the different aspects. And I've had experiences in high school interacting with the environment, and these experiences have just taught me so much about the importance of our resources. And I think that now it's more critical than ever to take care of these resources just because of what they provide for us as people, as well as what they provide for the ecosystems. But finally, I just want to thank the County Commission, as well as the Leon County Office of Sustainability for providing us with input on our resolution thus far. We're being sure to take all the feedback into consideration. We've constantly been editing our document, tweaking it, trying to make it as perfect as possible to be proposed and passed because we really hope to see Leon County become a leader in environmental issues and a leader in Florida for environmental issues as we are the capital of the state. And our youth members of GenCleo are fighting for a livable and sustainable future. And so I really think that this resolution can be our next step in getting there. Thank you.
Commissioners, you have a copy of the resolution. If someone wants to bring it up at the end of the meeting, we can bring it up then to ask for adoption. If not, we can bring it up at the next meeting. But we do all have a copy. I think they passed them out to us, correct? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Markell Ogletree.
Name and address for the record, please, ma'am. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Markell Ogletree. I live at 8146 Chris Lane. I'm in District 1. And I'm a supporter of GenCleo. I am a longtime Tallahassee resident, and I'm here also to speak in favor of supporting a climate emergency resolution in Leon County. As my sister mentioned before, this resolution acknowledges climate change for what it is, an emergency, especially as we see the worsening of tropical storms and hurricanes that cause power outages and fall on trees, and especially extreme temperatures that harm communities and puts the most vulnerable at risk. We've included the current work of the Leon County Commission and the Office of Sustainability in our resolution, as previously mentioned. And I am particularly interested in passing this resolution because I want to support the overall health and safety of people in the Tallahassee community. While I was at high school at Rickards, I often rode the bus with my sister to get around town, especially during the summer. And we'd travel across the city under the beating sun, especially in areas that didn't have as much tree cover or where there weren't as many bus shelters. And in one particular summer, I nearly passed out from being in the sun due to heat exhaustion. And we know that with climate change, extreme temperatures are going to only worsen. And passing this declaration is important to me because I care about, you know, the health and safety of myself and my family, as well as the wider community. Additionally, I've lived through several hurricanes and tropical storms here in Tallahassee and have seen the damage that they've caused, which is very concerning to me as a Tallahassee resident and, you know, as somebody who cares about my family. And with thinking about equity, we know that some communities will be impacted significantly more than others due to the warming effects caused by the climate crisis. Therefore, recognizing and continuing measures on a local level can ensure that the most marginalized communities are protected. I want to continue to express my thanks and gratitude for the Leon County Commission, for your continued support and work with us in, you know, trying to have our input included and, you know, kind of just push this issue forward. And I think it's really important because I want to see Leon County take a stronger stance on addressing this issue. Other cities in the state have passed climate emergency declarations, and I think it's always more important that, as the capital county, that we also, you know, show our leadership on this issue. And, yeah, I just want to thank you all so much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Final speaker, Samantha Kettis.
Name and address for the record, please, ma'am. You have three minutes.
My name's Samantha Kettis, 700 North Woodward Ave. My name is Samantha Kettis, and I'm the Youth Advocacy Lead and Tallahassee Regional Manager of GenCleo, which, as you know by now, is a climate advocacy and education organization in Tallahassee. I am here today to also speak in favor of passing the climate emergency resolution here in Leon County. Our proposed resolution acknowledges climate change for what it is, an emergency. We've included the current work of the Leon County Commission and Office of Sustainability in our resolution, as well as proposals we want to see Leon County do more of, such as forming a youth climate advocacy advisory council that would allow our fierce youth to contribute to environmental decisions that will affect their generation for decades to come. I personally care about this issue here in Leon County because it generally scares me. I'm originally from St. Petersburg, and being in Leon County while attending and recently graduating from Florida State University has allowed me to fall in love with this county and the environment that it coexists with. The future scares me because I want young adults to be able to appreciate this county for the wonderful environment it has, just like I have. I've chosen to stay in Leon County and keep fighting for climate justice because I appreciate McLeary Gardens, Munson Hills, Tall Timbers, and the other beautiful areas I've been lucky enough to visit. I've become fearful that one day I will not be able to enjoy the environment as I have been for the past four years, as well as new students who choose to call Leon County their new home. I see so much potential in this county, and I know we can work together towards a sustainable future, to work together towards protecting the youth. I would also like to thank the County Commission and Leon County Office of Sustainability for providing us with input on this document. We've taken all of your feedback into consideration and have been constantly editing and tweaking the resolution because we really want Leon County to take a stronger stance on climate change issues. We are fighting simply for a livable, sustainable future, and this resolution really can be the next step in that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. Commissioner Proctor, what we're going to do is we're going to go... Chairman, I'll just say that this is the final... Commissioner Proctor, what we're going to do is we're going to go to consent,[1742.84] Commissioner Parton, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go to consent, get it approved, and then after consent, I'll come to you, and then I'll go to the pooled items. Mr. Administrator, as I understand, we have two items pooled for consent, item number eight and number thirteen, correct?
That's correct.
Is there a motion for the remainder of consent?
No.
Because dissent has been moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by the vice chair. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now I'll come to you, Mr.-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, commissioners, while these young speakers of, from Cleo Institute have stepped forward, asking our body to adopt the declaration of a climate emergency that at the conclusion of our meeting during my time to, uh, address the council on open matters, I will be presenting this and asking for us to adopt it as an agenda, uh, referenced item, so that as we're approaching our 200th year anniversary, that we will have something fresh to say what our community stands for, um, and whether or not we could at least discuss which elements of this, uh, these whereas clauses we can abide by. So I, I, I thank you all. We appreciate it, and I will be making a motion. And hopefully, we will bring it back, and maybe you'll come back and hear the discussion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, will I be out of order to go ahead and recognize that motion now, or will I have to wait till after the end of the meeting?
It would be out of order in the agenda, so it should wait under your policy for commissioner's discussion time.
All right. Yes, ma'am. We'll wait for commissioner's discussion. Thank you. All right. We'll go to item number eight, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number eight, as requested by the board at your February 21st meeting, this item provides a report on an officer and resident program, proposal from Mount Olive Affordable Housing and Community Development Corporation. Commissioners, based on the analysis before you, our recommendation is to accept option one, or to approve option one, which is to accept the report and take no further action at this time. You do have three speakers on this item, and our staff is on deck, prepared to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you. Speakers.
First speaker, Belinda Goldsmith.
Name and address for the record, please, ma'am. You get three minutes.
Good afternoon again. My name is Belinda Goldsmith, 644 West Brevard Street. My husband and I are small business owners in the Frenchtown area. I was recently invited here by Mr. Barber to share with you my experience about the residential police officer program and why I support his home ownership program for law enforcement officers to reside in high crime areas. First, a brief background about myself. I used to work for the Alexandria, Virginia Police Department from 1990 to 2008, and during those 18 years of law enforcement, four and a half of those years were spent as a residential police officer. I was assigned to projects in public housing areas. Out of all my assignments, that was, in fact, the most challenging of them all, simply because I literally had to take my work home with me daily. In my opinion, it was the most effective way to fight crime. I honestly believe this type of program is the key to not only reducing crime, but also bringing the gap between the community and law enforcement agencies, which is so desperately needed these days. The type of police work required for this job is more proactive, a more proactive approach rather than reactive policing. I spent most of my time on foot patrol rather than in my cruiser, getting to know my neighbors, business owners, as well as those who were homeless and vagrant. My primary focus was to find out what changes in that community, in my community, that citizens wanted, not what I thought that they needed. So at that point, it was just a matter of prioritizing and pulling in all the necessary resources to resolve many of those issues. I started with improving the overall appearance of my neighborhood. When neighborhoods look better, it automatically helps deter crime. Simple phone calls to various city agencies helped to get rid of, um, helped to get things going, to the removal of graffiti from structures and buildings, towing away inoperable vehicles, and citing owners of unkept properties. I recruited neighborhood kids to help me pick up trash weekly and later to reward them with ice cream treats. When dealing with some of the nuisance and major crime issues, I would look within the police department to partner with various task force. We, to combat gang issues, I would, um, work with the gang unit. To deal with drug activities, I would set up operations with our narcotics units and so on. My goal was to, of course, help improve the quality of life for everyone in that community, including mine. Living rent-free, all those years gave me the opportunity to purchase my first home after leaving the program. I definitely believe these programs can be a win-win situation for everyone involved as long as it gets the proper support, the proper support is given and the right officers are assigned. So I hope that you seriously consider implementing these programs. I appreciate the opportunity, um, speaking to you today. Please, if you have any other questions, let me know. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Kayla Norris Barber.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Kayla Norris Barber, 527 West Brevard Street. While Mount Olive made a specific proposal for an officer and resident program, our objective is to incentivize participation from officers in this program. As such, we'd like to present two other options for your consideration. First, the agenda item referenced a home ownership development program, which offers $100,000 for first-time home buyers, and suggested that we use the HOD program, the first-time home, their home, home ownership development program, to attract sworn enforcement officers who would meet an income guideline of 80% of AMI or below. With sworn law enforcement officers, really won't meet that criteria. So we'd like to ask you to consider modifying the program to make exceptions for the income criteria for sworn officers, first responders, teachers, and nurses. Second option we'd like for you to consider is, um, the city of Tallahassee has allocated $60,000 for an officer and resident program in the Neighborhood First Program for Frenchtown. We'd like for you to at least consider matching that with $40,000, and that would give $100,000 for a first-time home buyer. And if we didn't have the income criteria, then we can certainly use that money for an officer and resident program. Additionally, it opens it up for, for other, other developers, not just Mount Olive. So we would appreciate your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Stanley Sims, Sr.
Good afternoon. I thought if I come in my Gundy outfit, things will go a little better for me today. I just want, I would be remiss if I not mentioned Ms. Hunter. Unlike you, Mr. Chairman, I was one of her clients of many years. And one of my major problems that I had, Commissioner, I would always get violated because I wasn't able to pay. And I remember one time, my poor wife was sitting in that office with her and me. And I used to use this slogan, "Robbing Peter to Pay Paul." And she not jumped on me, but immediately said, "That's your problem. We will not rob Peter to pay Paul. That's not the goal. The goal is to solve the problem." And she went to work, and she wasn't my probation officer, but whenever my probation officer would have problems with me, they would send me to the principal's office. And so when I got to her, she wasn't easy on me, vice chair, but she held me to be accountable. And so it worked. And so now, when I have problems with Vince, and I have to schedule a meeting with Vince, he brings along her, and that just, this kind of takes me down. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to you. In them 34 years, I had something to do. I should have been in that little proclamation there, but I'm good with that. But I'm here today because I love this initiative. It's just one more thing. Y'all know me. You give me an inch, I, I want a little more. I think that we also need to add to this list mental health workers. Mental health workers, if we can add mental health workers to get in, because then they have all a perspective that they naturally do those things that this lady was talking about, and then they're able to come back into their workfare circles, just like Ms. Hunter did. If you looked at my record on the paper, you would see a different person. But because Ms. Hunter took a personal interest in me, into my success, into me being trans, transitioning back into a community as a productive citizen, you can't turn that on and off, not when you really care. It's still running on 34 years, and she ain't got tired yet. So I really am supportive of this, and I'm just asking that mental care workers be added to the list. I hear you. Just chill out. I got you. I'm gone.
Thank you, sir. That's all our speakers. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity. I want to thank, um, Mr. Barber and, um, Mr. Sims, and the young lady that spoke about officer and residence program. Uh, Mr. Chair, I didn't ask for it to be pulled because I disagree with the recommendation from staff. I, I do believe, uh, that based on the agreement between the city and, um, Mount Olive, that it would be, um, contrary to the contract for the county to purchase that, that particular property. But I pulled it, um, Mr. Chair, because I like, I like the concept. I like the concept of, uh, officer and residents in our areas that, um, a high, high crime area. I do believe that if we place, um, officers, or sheriff officers, police officers in, in these areas, that it would be a deterrent, uh, would be a deterrent, uh, to crime, in a sense. And it's a situation that could be miserable as well. But what I wanted, uh, is an opportunity for us as commissioners to discuss the concept and maybe be able to flush it out at, at some point, maybe not at this meeting, but at some point, and maybe we could come up with some criteria, uh, to adopt that, that concept, um, uh, Mr. Chair. So I wanted, um, the commission, uh, my fellow commissioners to, to weigh on, weigh in on, on that concept. Now, I understand from our county administrator that, uh, there are some cities or counties that have, uh, have already adopted this, this particular concept, and maybe not necessarily in Florida, I believe, but, but outside of, of Florida. So it's not like we would be, um, starting, we, uh, from new. We, we would have, um, some indication from programs that are, are in existence right now. So whether or not it's effective, whether or not it's a deterrent. So I just believe it's, it's worth it, and we owe it to, uh, the citizens of Leon County to explore it. Maybe ask staff to see what they can do and maybe bring back some information where we can maybe move on it. I know there would be some, some costs involved, and we could look at that as well. Uh, and not necessarily something that we can do overnight, Mr. Chair, but, but I think it's just incumbent upon us to do what we can to address crime, uh, in our, in our various neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually, uh, there was two options that Mr. Barber gave there, um, one of which was for us to change the program that we have existing, which I think, after having some conversations with Mr. Lammy, that may present a few problems. But the other one was for us to match the city of Tallahassee's, uh, I think it was $50,000, I believe? Yeah, $40,000. Uh, in order to, um, give enough for a down payment, that would be open to everyone, which, in my opinion, I think if you look at the issue, tells me a lot about who Mr. Barber is, his community, and what he's trying to do, and that, uh, that would actually open it up to everybody, not just the specific property that he spoke on. So, uh, it's impressive that it wasn't about you, it's about doing something bigger for the community and getting somebody in that place, which I appreciated that. And I do, I do think, uh, this is, uh, something worthy for us to look, look into, but I'm wondering if we might have an agenda item, um, looking at if the board would be willing to allocate that match, or to evaluate, as you have said, Madam Vice Chair, a similar program here in Leon County to ones that, that are in other places that do exactly what we're talking about here with the officer and residence program, which I would actually like for it to be open, not just to, to, um, TPD officers, but also sheriff's deputies as well. So, um, I, I am as interested as you are, but we got a couple of options there to chew through. Uh, so I'm wondering here if, and I don't want to prolong the issue too much, if, if there's a majority of the board is interested in either evaluating that option of matching the city's $40,000, or, or bringing an agenda item to look at Leon County putting together a similar program as to what has been done in other places with this officer and training program, uh, officer and residence program. Is there any desire amongst the board to do such? If not, I entertain a motion for option number one, which is that recommendation. Yes?
Commissioner Matt, Chairman Matt, thank you very much. I would be in support of a motion to bring an agenda item back. However, depending on what the agenda item actually comes back to us in terms of the policy recommendations-
Yes.
-I may need to recuse myself, but I would be in support of such an agenda item coming back.
I understand. So, so, Madam Vice Chair, won't we, um, ask for an agenda item to come back, looking at the, the multiple options, um, that have been presented today, whether it be, um, well, I think the one program, the H, uh, the housing development program is already taking off, correct? I think that. Want to speak to that real quick?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We have, we are in the process of, right now, the application window is open. We're accepting applications from developers for the home ownership development program.
And when are you looking to, um, allocate those funds or, or approve those applications?
We're evaluating applications on Thursday.
And they'll be approved for when?
They would be approved Friday.
Okay. So I think we're a little bit behind the curve on that one, but what about a, a agenda item looking at matching the city or, and/or bringing back a, uh, or looking at a similar program constructed by our staff here in Leon County? Madam, Madam Vice Chair, I would, I would recommend us moving in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would be in favor, and I move that perhaps we ask for an agenda item, uh, to come back that addresses, uh, the city's program and maybe explore what we on the counter level, uh, might do as well in that it, with the officer residence program.
Thank you. That's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner, could ban all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? I'm sorry. Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a point of information. If we're, one of these items that would come back would be evaluating a, a match with the city, would we wait to contact the city, sort of to see what they would be looking for until after we have an agenda item, or would we be wanting staff to, to communicate with the city ahead of an agenda item?
I, I think my, my, my desire would be, uh, that, that-
They contact the city.
Staff would make contact, letting know, letting the city know that we're discussing it, so then they could be, all that information could be in the agenda item that comes back. All right. Uh, anything else? Item passes unanimously? We'll move to the next item. Thank you. Oh, wait. Do we want to address, do we have to address the, do we have to address option number one? Madam Vice Chair, you, are you okay with the item as is, as we, as we've adopted it? Okay. So we're good. Item number 13.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item number 13 is approval to contract for bond counsel and disclosure counsel services. As the board knows, under the existing policy, these, uh, legal services do not have to be competitively procured, but the last go-round, uh, they were at the request of the prior commission, uh, and they are worth a potentially substantial amount of money to the firms that are hired. So we issued two RFPs for outside counsel, one for bond counsel, one for disclosure counsel. One of them had to be, uh, rebid, but we ended up with more firms, uh, that were qualified and responsive to evaluate. Uh, the review of the proposals was completed by the Financial Advisory Committee in accordance with, uh, policy number 00-01, the Finance Advisory Committee. Um, you each received an email with additional backup materials about those evaluation scoring, um, in case you were interested in that. The rankings are attached in the RFP- The rankings are attached in the RFP tabulation sheet to the agenda item as Attachment One. Ultimately, Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson, P.A., was identified as the number one ranked firm for bond counsel services. George A. Smith, P.L.L.C., was the number one ranked firm for disclosure counsel services and staff recommends Options One and Two. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Attorney. I asked for this item to be pulled, Mr. Chair, because I didn't receive anything but a one-page ranking as a result of the RFP. And of course, we know that bond counsel is very specific legal work. And what I didn't have is the rating sheets that accompanied that one-page ranking. And I think staff normally gives us the rankings, the comparisons. Like we did with Waste Pro, we had the comparisons with the amounts and we saw the scoring. So I just pulled it, not that I disagree with the recommendation, but if I'm going to vote on it, I just needed a little bit more information on the ranking and the scoring sheets. And I understand since we've been here, we were given, I'm not sure, we were given some sheets. I haven't had a chance to look at them. I'm not sure if the other commissioners have had a chance to look at them. But I was just concerned that I only had a one-page with the rankings and not the scoring or the evaluation sheet. I didn't know who the evaluators were and that's why I pulled it, Mr. Chair.
I have two speakers. I'm sorry.
No, and I'm just not sure if any other commissioners had a concern about that as well.
Now, Commissioner, immediate pass and queue. I'd like two speakers. Mr. Administrator? First speaker, Mark Muschin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Well, I mainly was just here to be available to answer questions. I'm with, I'm the president of the Neighbors Giblin Firm. We're the top-ranked proposer for bond counsel. Since it got pulled off consent, as long as I'm here, I'll give you two minutes worth of just a few things about the law firm. We are, I know most of you in one capacity or another, but you may not know. I mean, this is what I do professionally. I've done this for forty years, I have to say. And our firm, I do nothing but this type of work. Our firm, I think, represents more counties as bond counsel than any firm in the state. We've been around for a long time. The contract for bond counsel for Leon County has been held by another firm for at least thirty-seven years, as long as I've been in Tallahassee. So I, we're excited about the possibility. I think it's a good time to change that. And we're looking forward to working with you if you desire to proceed ahead with the process here. I thought I'd speak a little bit about diversity, just since I'm here again. My partner, Junius Brown, who's in the proposal, a lot of you know Junius. His father was Junius Brown that was at FAMU as a judicial officer. He and I are the primary people working on this. We have an associate also. We're here in town. This is what we do. And so I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Next speaker, Jolinda Herring.
Good afternoon. My name is Jolinda Herring and I'm with the law firm of Bryant Miller Olive, P.A., here in Tallahassee. It has been a pleasure to work with the county for the last ten-plus years as your bond counsel. Bryant Miller Olive appreciated the opportunity to serve the county and provide bond counsel services as your trusted advisor. Over the years, we have accomplished many things for the county, such as setting precedent in the Leon County Energy Improvement District case, where the Supreme Court of Florida said that a litigant must appear in the initial court validation case in order to reserve their right to appeal or helping local businesses and nonprofits get access to capital, like Holy Comfort Episcopal School, for whom the county issued bonds on their behalf and resulted in a lower interest rate, thereby saving the school money. I would like to take this opportunity to thank your staff and the county attorney. They do an amazing job with the county's debt, always seeking for ways to get the best deal. I will continue to make myself available to the county and to the staff to answer any questions that may come about due to my historical knowledge of the county's debt. Bryant Miller Olive has been a member of this community since nineteen-seventy and we will continue to be an influential member of this community over the next fifty years. Just again, I want to say thank you for this opportunity that I've had to be able to serve Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pratt?
Chairman, Commissioner, when I walked in this afternoon, I saw on the screen, as we have a lot of reflections of what has occurred since our last meeting, the first picture that I saw was a frame that said, "Create it equal: Black women in the fight for equality." On one of the frames, I saw Commissioner Minor, who I take was at the moon. I saw Chairman Maddox and I saw our Assistant County Administrator participating, and there may have been others. I'm just talking about what was presented on screen. But what I saw was "Create it equal: Black women in the fight for equality." And Commissioner and Attorney Musson brought out the question of diversity. And I know that we perhaps are in the state of non-diversity and the fact that Bryant Olive, Miller, Bryant Miller Olive, what is it, BMO? They have represented for a long time. Their lead counsel who has represented them is black and female. You just heard of. And I don't understand how we are moving away from, and maybe we are moving away from D E I. That's what it seems like. When I looked at this, Commissioner Cummings, didn't know you were going to pull it. I saw it, flagged it, and what I'm understanding here is that this would be based upon an analysis of firms' past experience, its demonstrated ability, and its performance. I want to ask the question, what is Mr. Smith's past experience? What is Mr. Smith's demonstrated ability? And what is Mr. Smith's performance? What is this based upon? That's one question. I too am sort of seasoned on this data. And there is no score tabulation. It's just a final ranking which says nothing to us. And in particular, that the modest report and discussion, which is one page, tells us that the proposals submitted by Bryant Miller Olive, Holland and Knight, and Q-TAC Rock were deemed non-responsive and therefore they were not scored in that first round. I like saying LeBron James and Michael Jordan and Kobe Bryant are not, don't know what they're doing. These proposals by Bryant Miller and Olive in an area which they are seasoned, almost without peer. Holland and Knight, which is our state's largest, one of the most respected law firms, and Q-TAC Rock, which is equally respected, they were deemed non-responsive and they were not scored in the first round. That's horrible. Now, I just personally don't believe that these companies were, they do this. They do this. But who were those persons who were supposed to evaluate them? Nevertheless, our notes tell us that due to a procedural error that occurred during the evaluation, the solicitation was canceled. Following, Neighbors Giblin, Nickerson, Bryant Miller Olive, Holland and Knight, Q-TAC Rock, submitted proposals for bond counsel and were deemed responsive. I have nothing to go by to see the gap between non-responsive and the bridge which closed that gap to responsive. I have nothing to go by. I don't understand how a council that has represented us for, I think, a decade, share, does not make, didn't make the cut, didn't make the list and falls down to third place on bond counsel. But I have nothing to go by. Did not make the list for disclosure counsel. Now, if, if in fact, past experience, demonstrated ability, and performance is criteria, and if the second bullet is accurate, the firm's operations information. Look, we get more information on Waste Pro and people trying to empty the trash cans for our community. We find, were they responsive and MBE? We find what their actual numbers were. We find some kind of biography of that company and those type things. And we typically would have companies here to speak and address, defend, whatever. No one can convince me, and there's nothing in the time that I've served among and with you, that this is sufficient. Come on. This is not even elementary school. And this is not a put-down. It's just that this item is not timely. It's not deep enough. It's not broad enough. I'm not prepared to vote on it. I'm not prepared today to vote for, I have no confidence right now. And I'm thinking this needs to be further explained. And in particular, with the dismissal of current counsel to be placed in third ranking. I don't know why or how. And the Smith issue, I need to understand if past experience, demonstrated ability, and performance, I don't understand what George Smith got on Bryant and Miller and Olive, Holland and Knight, or Q-TAC. Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson is, I mean, they're on the Mount Rushmore of county representation. They're among the top and respected. I understand them totally. But I don't understand any institutional history. I don't see any institutional history. And I can only vote, Commissioners, because I wasn't in the room and I'm not a part of the financial advisory team that we're asked to believe. This is just too much. I know the climate, political climate that we're in. We're not trying to be woke and we're walking back and we're going backwards from a proud company that's done well and to have had, this is personal, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. And I'm not happy because I don't understand what Jolinda Herring and that company have done. My daughter having just completed the first year in law school, I'm not happy to see a door slammed in the face of a minority representation, of female representation. And I'm wanting my daughter to be one of these kind of people one day. But right now, without any narrative to help me get there, this is insufficient to go by, for either of us, I think, to go by. This is a very important role. And I would appreciate a delay on this. I would appreciate the kind of information that typically comes to this body for such a substantive review. And I'd like to offer at least a motion that we receive the full scoring card, that we get some biography on the George Smith. And I'm asking the county attorney right now to please help me to understand what is the demonstrated. And maybe it's not fair to ask without the comparison of the others. How many years they've done this? Were their senior counsel have done this? What is institutional credibility and those things? How they rank by standard and pores, whatever that is for legal, all of that, side by side. Our board, we do not have that kind of data. And therefore, I'd like to make the motion that we receive in more detail to understand how the county attorney is presenting this matter to us to decide. Motion?
Motion's been made by Commissioner Pratt that the item come back with more details to how the county attorney's office arrived at this conclusion of options number one and number two. Is there a second to that motion?
There's a second.
Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Cummings. I'd like to make a few comments myself, ask a few questions. Madam County Attorney, just if you could, for me, this item that you've given us, specific to bond counsel as well as disclosure counsel, have you given us something like this before on other items?
We don't usually competitively procure legal services. I, as the county authority, under a policy adopted by this board, have authority to just go out and do that.
Right.
But again, because it was requested by the board the last time the board entered into a contract for these services that it be competitively solicited, I went in and just did it again this time. Also because the value of the contracts, they're worth a substantial sum of money to these firms if the county actually engages in any financing during the course of the contract. So to avoid any perception of favoritism or anything else, we just prepared the RFPs like we do every solicitation and we put them out to bid. Now, if I could, answer questions about who scored these.
Yes.
So Rashonda Bradley, the budget manager for the county, Ed Burke, who's the finance director for the county, Ken Morris, as you all know, Assistant County Administrator, myself, and Alan Rosenzweig, your deputy county administrator. Those were the evaluators for bond counsel. There was a slightly different group for disclosure counsel. That was, again, Alan, Scott Ross, who's your budget director, Rashonda Bradley, your budget manager, Ed Burke, again, your finance director, and myself. For disclosure counsel, and this is again a process that's not done by the county attorney's office. This is handled by the purchasing office, just like every competitive solicitation is handled by the purchasing office, not by the county attorney's office. I was merely an evaluator and another attorney, because I wasn't an evaluator and I didn't want to be involved in drafting the solicitations since I was an evaluator on these solicitations, helped draft the scope of work. Okay? So this was treated like every other RFP. The evaluators all scored individually. The experience and operations information, as clearly articulated in the RFPs, had weighted scores along with a local preference for firms that have a local office and also cost. Cost was also a component. Each of the evaluators scored on those two criteria. Purchasing handled, giving them the score for local preference, and then merely ran a mathematical calculation for ranking for cost, aggregated all that information. That's how you came out with the rankings. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. So listen, I like a pretty clean process and I know our purchasing department runs one. It's my preference, honestly, quite frankly, that we sit here, that we approve this and give those who may have any kind of heartburn with it the opportunity to challenge it. Which there is an opportunity for them to do such, correct, Madam Attorney?
There was and no firm came forward and filed a bid protest.
Which gives me more reason to why I'm ready to move forward with this. So I can't support a motion on the floor. I can't see, okay, if we would like more information, then I think some of that information has been shared with our vice chair here and it could be shared with the rest of you if you so desire to have such.
Point of information, all of that information was shared with the commissioners at three eleven P.M. today. You all have it in your emails.
Right. So even with that, we have it all. I just, I get a little bit, I won't say nervous, but yeah, I would say nervous. I get a little bit nervous when we have a purchasing process that really this isn't any different than any other RFP process that we have. And though we say there's not enough information there, I've always said our processes are tight and right. This didn't necessarily even, or didn't go through the county attorney's office as much as it did go through our regular processes of purchasing that we have always used. And then to get more detail that... more detailed, that the people who are on this committee, this, this, this evaluation committee were from all assets and facets of the, of the organization, makes me even more comfortable. So I, I am, I am going to vote against the motion on the floor. And if, if staff recommendation is moved, I'll be supporting that. And so, that's where I am on it. I have Commissioner Coman, Commissioner O'Keefe, and Commissioner Proctor in queue to speak. Commissioner Coman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for optics of a conflict, I'm going to be recusing myself from this vote. Thank you.
So let the record show, the Commissioner Coman is recusing himself for appearance of a conflict.
We, we need more information on the record about the nature of the perceived conflict for the record.
Yeah, no problem. One of the law firms in this bidding process is a tenant of my business partners downtown.
That's Vice. Thank you. So Commissioner Coman will be recusing himself from the vote. I have now Commissioner O'Keefe in queue to speak. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I have a question for either the county attorney or purchasing. Is, are, are our MWVE goals and policies were applied in this solicitation?
Yes, sir.
They were not. It was strictly experience, operations, local preference. So do you have an office here? And then cost, that's it.
All right. And so I understand that is, that makes sense as far as it's not necessarily required, but I do, it's, it is a very important thing we do. It's something we believe in. I will say that as we were sitting here, I looked up in the Leon County MWVE vendor portal, and the firm that was mentioned, Bryant &amp; Olive, is not listed as certified MWVE. I didn't have time to go look at the other firms. And I also believe that the process was followed, and that we trust our professionals to do it, and that, so that makes sense to me. That's where I line up. However, I will say, we do, and the other thing is, you know, as mentioned about if someone's been doing something a long time for us, I've done a lot of procurements, and sometimes the same person doesn't always win. Sometimes fresh eyes or more competitive bid come in, and that's part of the process, serving the public good. And so, all that being said, I, I will mention that if commissioners didn't get the information they need to make the decision, and there's a motion on the floor, Chairman, I'm not trying to change that.
Yes, sir.
The thought I have is, and you can give me guidance on this, we have a public hearing with a break-in between. Could we say to commissioners who want time to read what was sent to them, that we can bring this back up after the public hearings to give them time to read what they were sent during our break? Or would that blow things up?
I'll tell you what, let me ask the questions. Are any commissioner here, who, here who has not reviewed the email that's been sent?
I haven't. When I heard just now that it was sent today.
Yes.
Okay. I read my book before today. I, I just, I, I hear from other people, Mr. Barber on today, fresh voices. I do the verbal exchanges on today.
All right, Commissioner, your next comment, I just wanted that question answered, so Commissioner O'Keefe can have some kind of insight on where he might want to go with this.
Yeah, I haven't read it either.
Right. So there are commissioners, there are commissioners who have not looked at that email?
That's all I have.
Thank you. I have Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Cummings in queue to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I, I simply say that, all due respect to the esteemed group who serve as the review committee, notwithstanding their collective genius, I have great confidence in my own developmental development, and I have enough belief to raise a question. When Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson falls in second place to George Smith, along the lines of experience, local preference, and those other couple of elements that Ms. Osteen just shared with us, I'm unable to reconcile. Attorney Smith has greater experience, a record of operations information, the firm's operations information, demonstrated ability and performance against Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson. And, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just dumb enough to ask, where is the beef? And is, is nothing here? I don't think that my inquiry here is inconsistent with the facts of what we're asked, demonstrated ability, performance, past experience. Who is George Smith? Where is their experience? Is they really came ahead of LeBron James? Neighbors came in number two? Holland and Knight is at number four? Again, I trust my own judgment, not saying anything untoward toward those who were the decision makers. But I'm unable, if we're using these elements as our guidelines, if I, not realizing your total confidence in staff, I have confidence in staff, except for when I do not. Currently, I do not. And I would like to see this done over, but I know you won't walk that far. But we at least deserve less than two hours to, you know, just give you some idea. This is a small book we have tonight. Our book is really little. The world will see our book. This is the information that we, this is small for tonight, tonight. But I can't integrate all of that with the multiple issues that we're going through today. I think it's very unfair. I feel blindsided. And I must state that I do not believe whoever Smith is, I don't think that they're qualified and rank above the firms which they've beat out. I just don't understand it. And I'd like to be able to cast a vote for District One, the people who voted for me. And I don't appreciate not understanding how Jolinda Herring, who was given so much favorable to success for our county, there are no demerits, there are no write downs, there have been no complaints that, that has been presented to us in any way, previous history of failure, incompetence, nothing like that. I'm not accepting this tonight in a, in a, in a right mind, that, and therefore, I do have reservations about this committee's judgment, and I don't understand on what basis. And for the first time, I feel our county staff is, has refused, except for the last minute, and I don't know if that was intention. What accounts for this being so late to us, Ms. Osteen? Why are we just getting this today? Why, I mean, is somebody trying to pull the wool over our eyes? What is occurring here? That something so important, a firm that done nothing wrong that had been written up for, negative? I just don't feel good about this. But I, I share, and I've shared my views. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam, Madam County Attorney, I've heard Commissioner Proctor ask at least three times, who is George Smith and what is that firm? I want to give you an opportunity to answer that. And I do want, I do also want to get you to, to speak to, again, one more time, just briefly, the process by which you went through to get, to get to the conclusion that you got to.
Sure.
Madam County Attorney?
So George Smith, until January of this year, was a partner at Bryant, Miller, and Olive, and in fact, performed disclosure council services while a partner for many, many years while he was at Bryant, Miller, and Olive. He just went out on his own.
And on day one, on his own, he's, has more experience than these other firms and other, the company even left. The leaf is greater than the tree, is what you're telling me.
He performed these services while at BMO. He continues to perform these services in his private firm. So speaking to his past experience, he's very qualified. He was ranked based on past experience, his operations, his local, his local presence, and cost, just like all the other candidates. So because you've asked, Mr. Chair, I'll repeat the process. But before I do, let me just say this. The board has the discretion to throw out the results of the competitive solicitations and just pick the council you want for disclosure and bond council. That's within the purview of this board. The additional information was provided to the board today at the request of a commissioner. That request came at like 2:45 PM. Would have been happy to provide it earlier had we known the board wanted that information earlier than 2:45 PM today. The process we went through was a solicitation document was drafted for disclosure council and bond council services. Purchasing used the OpenGov portal like it does for all solicitations. It went out to lots of different firms. Purchasing always does responsiveness review and check to make sure that what's submitted in the proposals meets all of the requirements, to then be scored by the evaluation committee. Those that were deemed responsive were scored by the evaluation committee, and then purchasing went back, and it added the local preference score, and it calculated the cost, added the aggregate rankings, and this is what you came up with. But again, all of these firms are qualified. Every single one of them could do this work. They are the firms in the state of Florida that provide these services at the state and local level. You really can't go wrong. It's completely within the discretion. Happy to take board direction from the board, whatever you would like to do.
Thank you. So it's 2:45. We've been chewing on this for a minute. When it comes down to it, we got a few options here, and I'm ready to get to them. There's a motion on the floor that I think it was that we postponed.
Just to bring it back.
And then we bring it back with more information. That's one option. The second option, as the county attorney has said, is that we can throw out all business, pick who you want to pick if you want to pick somebody. It's the second option. The third option is, is that we just go with staff recommendation and move forward with this. Now, we got a motion on the floor. If there's not a substitute motion that's going to come, or some thought is going to come, then I want to move forward with the agenda. I have Commissioner Cummings, the vice chair. I have Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Proctor to speak. And after that, we're going to a vote. Commissioner Cummings?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make it clear, fellow commissioners, that in reading this particular item on the consent agenda, I requested that it be pulled because I didn't feel I had enough information to vote on this particular item. I only had one page with rankings. I didn't have score sheet comparisons, like the county, county administrator did, for comparison with Waste Pro. We had a lot of background information. I'm not questioning what purchasing does. I'm not questioning the, the process, the procedure. Madam counter attorney, I believe you guys are above board this voice, integrity in the process. I'm not questioning the process. My concern was, sitting here as a commissioner representing the citizens of Leon County, I didn't feel like I had enough information to vote on this particular item. And that is why I asked that it be pulled to provide more information, which is why I, I don't have a problem supporting the motion that it come back, just with the supporting documentation, come back to us for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Minor, and then finally Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As it stands right now, I would vote to accept the, the agenda item. But I do respect Mr. Proctor's request for more information. I just looked at the email that our county attorney sent us. It would not take him too long, I believe, to, to review that. But I think it's something he possibly could do during the break before the public hearing. In addition to meeting with the county attorney, should he have any further questions after looking at this email? So my motion is a substitute motion to postpone this item until after agenda item number 25. That would give Commissioner Proctor a chance to review the email that was sent. I hadn't looked at it either, sir, until, until just now, as well as reaching out to the county attorney for any further questions, so that we can revisit this item after item 25 and make a decision then.
All right. Motion on the floor is that we postpone action on item 13 until the end of general business, which, which would be.
25.
Item 20, well, actually, to the end of the public hearing, which would be the first item coming back on general business if we come back. Is there a second to that motion? Motion's been seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. What I would like to do now is go straight to a, a vote on a substitute motion, which is that we postpone action until after the end of public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries objection. With the recusal, so it's 6-0, 6-0-1, with Commissioner Coman recusing himself for, for an emotional floor. So this item will come back. Commissioners, make sure you please review the email from county attorney will come back.
Can I get that in print, please? I don't read emails.
Yes, sir. Madam County Attorney, could you have somebody from your office print that out and make sure it's in everybody's mailboxes prior to us breaking in the next 12 minutes? Okay, we're going to try to get through. I, I do have a desire to get through general business. We are still on consent. Do we have any items? Oh, we'll go straight to general business. I'm number 19, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item 19, commissioners, is ratification of your actions taken at your budget workshop on April 25th. Staff recommends you accept options 1 through 13. Again, reflects all the actions you took on that.
Is there a motion for items 1 through 13? It's been moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objection?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Proctor.
Let me just say, commissioners, I'm very, very pleased to see option four. And I thought that in our previous comments about option four under staff's recommendation, which is that we would provide a 5% raise for county and constitutional officer employees at our June 20th budget workshop. Excellent. It captures that. I think that in, in the spirit of that moment, when the county administrator brought it to our awareness, that we felt between a rock and a hard place related to the FRS dynamics. I am feeling relieved, and I'm certain that you feel relieved, that the FRS dynamic did not explode as we anticipated that it possibly could have. So there's great comfort in noting that the 5% raise that our board has contemplated, there's greater room for it to occur without hardship. Then, under option eight, Mr. Administrator, I want to ask, what, what is the latter part of that conjunction? And any alternative for fire suppression methods? What, what does that mean? I didn't, I didn't understand that statement under, under option eight.
Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I was just, I was just reading option eight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you asked us to explore any other fire suppression, like water tanks and, and utilization of, of natural features to be able to, to utilize for fire suppression.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll certainly do that.
Okay, very good. And then under option 11, on 11, that includes the Crawfordville Road sighting, which I indicated under the lighting policy. We were talking about for schools, school stops, that Crawfordville Road, and you indicated something. And I didn't, I didn't see Crawfordville Road here.
Sure.
I love that word.
This, Mr. Chairman, to respond, Commissioner Proctor, this is the separate street lighting policy that you approved at that time, which would be an, an on-request type of policy. But I, I hear your reference to Crawfordville Road, and I believe we reported at that time that FDOT has that lighting project underway. Ken, can I, can I look at you for confirmation for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No, sir.
All right. All those in favor of motion on the floor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries objection. Item number 20 is the approval of the funding recommendation for the tourist development council tax allocation through community, through the CRA or of Indaba. I have gone out in the audience and talked to Ms. Cattrall, and what she has said is that she's very pleased, and she wanted to thank the commission for their hard work and for sending it back for consideration.
Move option one, Mr. Chairman.
Of the, of the city. Option one has been moved by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by our vice chair. Give us a wave. Ms. Cattrall, give us a wave. Donna, give us a wave. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Chairman, you entertain discussion on this? Will you?
Yes.
Very good. Ms. Chairman, I wanted to say that on tomorrow, there is a grand opening of our new tourist development center somewhat related to this, our new headquarters. And Ms. Post is here. If, if you just allow the specifics of our new tourist office, Ms. Post, Ms. Chairman, if you allow that.
Can she do that later?
I'll do it under my.
Sir, he'll do it under his time, but she'll do it later. Is that cool?
Okay, that's very, very good.
We'll make sure we get her in to do that.
Very, very good.
Ms. Cattrall, did you want to speak? Because if you do, I'll let you.
No, I, I, I'm happy with the decision, and I thank you all so much. I really appreciate all meetings of mine that's been a watching. Thank you.
Let, let the record show, she said thank you. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to briefly just acknowledge the CRA and thank them for agreeing to review Indaba along with the consortium, which is Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra, the Southern Shake. Shakespeare Company, as well as Word of South. And I appreciate CRA revisiting that and allowing them to have some administrative funds and production funds. And we are looking forward to some great art performances, music, dance, Shakespeare. So congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, real quickly, I serve on the TDC representing our board. I sat in Commissioner Cummings' chair on Thursday morning. I don't understand why this money is passing from our county to the TDC. There are two city commissioners. We have one county commissioner. I don't like that. That needs to be rectified. And I'm asking for some recommendation that we have another county commissioner. It ain't right for us to be pushing this money and being underrepresented in what we do. And I don't know why it's two commissioners that only, I mean, the one county commissioner you have can handle things. Don't get twisted. But in all fairness, two representative voices, we ought to have an additional county commissioner on that board. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Motion made by Commissioner Proctor, I believe.
Proctor.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any objection? Motion carries objection. Item Number 21 is a statute report update regarding curbside collection services provided by Waste Pro Inc. Mr. Administrator, do you have anything for us on that?
We're recommending Option 1 and 2, and we have no speakers on the side.
So motion for Items 1 and 2? Moved by Commissioner Comban, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any objection? Seeing none, show it is passed unanimously. Item Number 22 is the nomination of the governor appointment to the CSC of Leon County. Mr. Administrator, do you have anything there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Option Number 1, request that you nominate three citizens to the governor's office. The eligible applicants are listed there. There is Sandra Glenn, who's seeking reappointment, Patty Thomas Ball, Matt McKibben, Michelle Miller, Lisa Perry, John Sheets, and Amanda Walter. And again, seeking three nominations from the board. Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Is there a motion for reappointment?
Mr. Chair, I move reappointment of Ms. Sandra Glenn to the council. She's our present chair and doing a great job.
Sandra Glenn has been reappointed by the vice chair, member of CSC. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Minor. All those in favor, you can by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I need two more nominations. Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Ms. Patty Ball Thomas, or Dr. Patty Ball Thomas.
All right. Dr. Patty Ball Thomas has been moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there any objection to such? Seeing none, show her approved unanimously as well. I need a third.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I nominate Mr. John Sheets. His quick background is, he is graduated with a social work master's with almost a 4.0 GPA. Currently is a researcher in child services.
John Sheets has been moved by Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any objection? Seeing none, show it is approved. Those are our three nominees for the CSC. I also want to recognize Ms. Sika Green in the crowd. Thank you for coming out today. We're moving now to Item Number 23, which is full board appointments. Mr. Administrator, you want to lead us through that?
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Option Number 1 seeks your reappointment of three citizens, Jackie Wilson, Sean Friend, and Jeff Blair to the advisory committee on quality growth.
Can I get a motion for that reappointment? Option Number 1? So moved by Commissioner Minor, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe, I'm sorry, Commissioner Welch. All those in favor, you can by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries objection. I would like to move to Item Number, Option Number 3 if I could, and I would advocate for the appointment of Lenisha Thornton, who was a reappointment, I believe, and Eddie Gonzalez Lumet. So moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any objection? Seeing none, show it is approved unanimously. Item Number 2, Mr. Administrator, you want to take that one?
Option 2 seeks your appointment of two citizens. We provided five names for the advisory committee on quality growth.
Any recommendations there? Yes, Commissioner Comban. Pastor O'Brien's been moved by the Commissioner Comban, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any objection? Seeing none, show him as appointed. You need two on that one, I believe. Is there a second nomination? I'll tell you what, would anybody willing to nominate on my behalf, Latif Mohammed? So moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner, by the vice chair. Any objection? Seeing none, show it is approved. We need one appointment for this value adjustment board for two-year terms ending in 25. I am on that board. Commissioner Cowan, I believe, is looking for a reappointment. He's done a great job for us. Is there a second? Is there a motion for his reappointment? So moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by the vice chair. Any objection? Seeing none, show it is approved unanimously. I want to thank the board for working with me and helping me get through these, through general business. We'll take a 5 o'clock break and be back here at 6 o'clock for Item Number, or actually be back for public hearing, followed by Item Number 13.